Welcome to the July 23, 2025 School Committee Meeting. District Vision and Core Values. The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core Values. In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping student needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Item 1.2, Statement by the Chair, Video or Audio Recording of Meeting. This School Committee meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the Barnstable Public Schools YouTube channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Item 1.3, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Routine Business. Before we begin, I would like to move to place items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 after item 3.1 on this evening's agenda.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.1, Public Comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. Public comment at Barnstable School Committee Meeting is limited to town of Barnstable residents, taxpayers, and Barnstable Public Schools employees, students, or family members. Speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material and must begin their comments by stating their name and town. An extension of the speaker's time may be granted at the discretion of the Chair. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The Committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item to be placed on a future agenda. The Chair will also allow public comment at her discretion during the meeting. Item 2.2, School Committee Subcommittee and Liaison Reports.
Do you want to go to those things?
Oh, we're going before 3.
Did you ask if there was anybody for public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is anybody here for public comment?
Like, you read that thing, but...
Yeah. The room is practically empty, so I apologize. Seeing no one for public comment, public comment is now closed. All right, so we're moving 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 after item 3.1.
Okay.
All right. So, item 2.2, the Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. The Facility Subcommittee, Jen Cullum, had an unexpected delay. She texted me that the Committee did not meet, so there's no report. Policy Subcommittee met on Thursday, May 17, and Tuesday, May 22, to discuss the homework and cellphone policies appearing later on the agenda. The next meeting is Monday, August 11 at 10:00 a.m. So, Cape Cod Collaborative, the representative is not here yet. Wellness Committee, Mike?
We didn't meet.
Okay. Item 2.3, School Committee Comments. There has been a change in the agenda structure that I want to make sure everybody's aware of in the public. We're going to have regular updates from the town regarding items that impact the schools to ensure that the public is aware of town items that have an impact on our schools directly, just in case you're not following town council meetings. So, these will start in September. Because of that, we had to cut back on some items on the agenda. So, I wanted to remind everybody that the Committee reports are just reporting what happened prior between meetings, and I want everybody to be aware that the minutes are posted on the school's website, easily accessible if you need more information, and the reports will just highlight major items. So, starting...
Point of Information. Chair, is this policy change listed in our district policies relative to School Committee comments?
All right, so, point of information means that there's been a procedural error. There is no policy, other than the Chair of the Committee sets the agenda, and everything is in line with Massachusetts general law.
Chair, I remind you that, under Massachusetts general law, our meetings are conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, which does not place a specific time limit on commentary. Therefore, if you are saying that there is a three-minute limit on School Committee comments, if that's what you're saying, there is most certainly a procedural error relative to our policies, as well as Massachusetts state law. I'm clarifying that. Therefore, if you'd like to respond, you can respond.
I haven't mentioned the three-minute time limit. The three-minute time limit was discussed for School Committee members to make comments because it's in line with what we allow the general public, and we also have the ability to speak to any agenda item during the meeting. So, I don't expect that anybody's freedom of speech will be curbed, and it's following the same policies. That it, there is no policy, there, an agenda can have time limits on certain items, as we do with public comment. We can set time limits for presentations. That is at the discretion of the Chair.
So, again, you're saying the three-minute time limit is in effect for this meeting. I'm simply making it clear that that time limit is out of compliance with our district policies, the Massachusetts state guidelines, and state law. So, if enforced, I don't know if it's going to be enforced, it could constitute no open meeting law violation. I simply want to state that.
Okay, Mike?
So, Andre, my question to you, and you sound like you've researched it, so can you give me the, our policy number? Can you give me the state law that you're referencing? I'm sure you probably have it. Just, can you just give them, give me the policy? Because I, I don't, I honestly don't know if we have a policy. I know we do have a policy for public comment, but I didn't know if we, I didn't know we had one for time limit, like, for us.
I can clarify that we have no policy...
Well, I'm just asking, Andre, because he's saying that, that we do, so I'm just wondering what policy it is, and, because I, I am on Board Doc, so I can go to our policies, so if you can just let me know what, I'm sure that's probably where you looked.
Sure, Mike. It's two policies specifically. One is Policy B E D B, the Agenda Format, which states that the Superintendent conferring with the Chair will arrange the order of items on meeting agendas, so that the Committee can arrange its business as expeditiously as possible. The particular order may vary from meeting to meeting. There is nothing that establishes a time limit. Furthermore, furthermore, thank you, furthermore, Policy B E D D, the Rules of Order for our meeting, clearly states that Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, will govern the proceedings of the Committee, except when those rules are in conflict with the Committee's approved policies and procedures. So, to be clear, I, I bring this up to note, the idea of a specific time limit on our commentary is unusual in Massachusetts. And I've reached out to MASC, and I just want to establish that we are following these guidelines and making sure that we're in line. Again, Robert's Rules of Order states that every individual has a right to speak within the debate. I'm sorry that I was, I went to the Town Hall rather than being here, so I was a couple minutes late. There may be an issue with the revisions to Subcommittee comments, which unfortunately, I, I went to Town Hall, so I, you know, I couldn't comment on that. So, every individual has the opportunity to speak should they want to, within a specific agenda item, A. And then, they might offer a rejoinder, you're allowed to speak twice, maximum of twice, once everybody has spoken, yes, within Robert's Rules of Order. And I will inform the Committee that if no specific time limit is established in Robert's Rules of Order, then 10 minutes is the generally expected time that a member will take within, within their commentary. So, once again, I, I just want to note the, the district policies, our state policies, and also the state open meeting laws, and make sure that we're following them relative to School Committee comments, the comments of elected officials.
Mike?
So, you said, "General, we were violating Massachusetts general law," and I assume you're talking about the open meeting law, and does that talk about that, those time limits, or, or that 10 minutes, or, I guess, how does, how does the state, like, okay, you talked about the policy, but how does it work for the state? Like, why are we violating, what, what law are we violating in the state, are you claiming, and what, what's the law, and what's, because it looks like you referenced that, so I'm just asking you, I don't know.
Yes, it, it would constitute, should this limit be put in place, this, this limit, again, that we, as a School Committee, have not approved, but if, should it have been put in place, it could constitute an abuse of power...
Okay.
...on account, you know, of, of the Chair, by limiting...
You can talk, right, the 10 minutes and all of that stuff.
By limiting the, the free speech, the debate time...
Yeah, all that stuff that you already referenced.
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Okay, so, I just want to clarify that there is no policy, I didn't change a policy. I said that, what, what I said is that we would keep our comments to three minutes in line with the public comment, and the public comment actually states that the Chair will allow public comment at the discretion during the meeting, and that an extension of the speaker's time may be granted at the discretion of the Chair. So, if the Committee, if you needed more time, and you wanted to ask for more time, and make a motion for more time, you could put that forward while you're speaking if your time is ended. The time, as I mentioned at the beginning, we are adding two regular agenda items, items that we expect to take about 30 minutes each during the meetings, and to keep the meetings running efficiently, as mandated by Robert's Rules of Order, we have to cut back someplace else.
So, if I can kind of try to resolve this, my suggestion is for this meeting, I, I believe there's obviously confusion here, and I don't want to, like, I've always been very much about people being able to say what they want to say and stuff like that, so my suggestion would be that we don't implement this, have this go to the Policy Committee and decide if they want to bring a policy change, create a policy for doing that, because I can also say that when I was a Chair, we did change the public comment policy. I don't know if you got, you got, were you guys on? You guys, you guys might have been on. Yeah, I don't know, but I remember, I remembered that change, because I remember we talked all about all kinds of different changes within the public comment policy. So, my suggestion is where this is a gray area, we just kind of like table this for this meeting, send it out to the Policy Committee, you guys can bring a policy back to us, and then we can, the five of us can vote on it, and we can decide as a Committee whether we limit it, don't limit it, whatever it is, but all five of us will have a kind of input into it. Is that kind of a good resolution? Does that kind of work for everybody?
That works for me.
Yeah, I'm fine with that for tonight. I'd like to get on with the meeting. We have guests here who are waiting for agenda items. So, the intent was to ensure that when we have guests, when we have staff members, you start working early in the morning, and must stay through our meeting at night, that they're not waiting two, three hours, which has happened in the past, to be here when one of their items is addressed. So, we're on School Committee Member Comments. Peter, do you have anything?
No, I suppose we'll be talking about the policy issues later in the meeting, so I'm good.
Andre?
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to speak to some comments that I made previously, vis-à-vis our school budget last meeting, and, and correct those comments, as I said that I would, because they, they were in error. One of the primary responsibilities of School Committee members is to deal with the finances of a district, and understanding, of course, what the state aid is, is paramount within that discussion, and so I will establish again that my numbers at the last meeting were in error, as the budget had not passed, and I just wanted to clarify, specific to the Chapter 70 funding, which has been approved by our Governor, and the Superintendent will speak to it, but it was north of 6 percent, and will, 6.1, 6.7, I'm not exact, don't have it right there in front of me, but the Chapter 70 funding, year to year, did increase, and I will also note that there was a notable increase in the per, per pupil expenditure across many districts, from $30 to $150, and the majority of Massachusetts districts were included in that total. So, I wanted to clarify previous statements, so that the community has accurate information relative to our budget. If there's, I could do my presentation now, or I could wait until everyone's spoken.
We'll put it after the rest of the School Committee comments.
Thank you.
Mike?
No, I don't have anything. I hope everybody's enjoying their summer. The only thing I would also request, so I would request that, that for School Committee comments goes to the Policy Committee. I'm also formally requesting the School, well, you guys are looking at that, look at the, since Andre brought it up, you might as well put it all on there and do the School Committee Subcommittee and Liaison Reports, since that's going to become, obviously, that's a problem too, so you guys might as well look at that and just deal with it all. So, I'm kind of requesting both of those go to the Policy Subcommittee and kind of tangle those, tangle around those things. And that's it.
All right, and I have nothing to add to my initial explanation for the change of the agenda. Andre?
All right, thank you, Chair. Even though it is summer, Barnstable remains a large, diverse, and dynamic district, and there were a number of things that took place to conclude the school year, and a number of things that are going on in the summer that I wanted the public to be aware of. Are we able to get, yes, yes. Oh, thank you, that was the first, I like it. I hadn't seen that as the first slide, but I think it's a good improvement. So, Hyannis West hosted a Flag Day Ceremony on June 13. The Superintendent of Schools, along with members of the Town Council and the John F. Kennedy Memorial Trust, attended. A flag that flew over the Capitol Building in Washington, DC, was presented to Hyannis West. Students waved flags as they sang songs throughout the day. Moving over to Barnstable United Elementary School, where there is much to report. History came to life at BUES. Mr. Harmon's history students presented plays reenacting the Boston Massacre and Boston Tea Party for their peers. A fantastic way to learn about key moments in American history through performance and creativity. Great job to the students at Barnstable United. Congratulations to our published 5th grade poets. The printing of our Imagination Unleashed Poetry Book was proudly sponsored by the family of a classmate, Johnny Dumas, and loving memory of his grandfather. We celebrate our 5th grade authors and artists for our team family. Poetry Popsicles End of Year Celebration. We kindly thank the Cape Cod Five and Enoch Cobb for the teacher mini-grants, providing artists with the needed supplies as well. Thank you, Mr. Pober, for our fabulous, and our fabulous PE teachers, Ms. Semprini, Mr. McCabe, for allowing us to use the gym to host our fabulous families. We appreciate you very much. Thanks to a generous grant of the Enoch Cobb Foundation, all Barnstable United students experienced an unforgettable presentation by Disney artist and speed painter Rob Saret. Rob wowed us with his talents and stayed after to inspire and sign autographs for our 5th graders. It was truly an inspiring day. Staying at BUES, students rocked a Read-A-Thon from May 16 to June 2, reading a total of 162,557 minutes. The top readers from each homeroom received a coupon for a free ice cream. The class with most minutes read for each grade won a Level 1 popsicles and extra recess plus a free slushy coupon. Great stuff. Thank you for the support from the BUES staff, as well as Officer Morrison, who you can see there. This is the 4th grade concert at BUES, where the students on, across all of the different specialties, got out and were showing their talents. Very encouraged that our program at the United School is going very strong, and these students will be future participants at the high school. I just want to note that that was the 4th graders. This is the 5th grade concert at BUES, so divided into two segments. These young people will be moving on to Barnstable Intermediate School, where we know that they are going to continue with their success. Again, at BUES, jazz was in the house. A big thank you to Bart Wiseman and his jazz group for bringing rhythm, history, and soul of jazz to our students. Not only did they light up the gym with a live performance, but they also took us on a journey through the roots and evolution of jazz music. Splash-tastic fun at BUES. Our 4th graders in the Carrie Manfredi Pod cashed in on their hard-earned points for a chance to soak classmates, if, and earn their, to win a point, excuse me. So, this is the Manfredi Pod, end-of-year opportunity to soak classmates, get out in the sunshine. This is the 5th grade carnival. A huge shout-out to the amazing PTA at Barnstable United Elementary for making sure the 5th grade carnival was a day to remember. From games to giggles, fun was had by all. What a fantastic way to celebrate each other as they moved on into summer vacation. This is new in the district, but I'm glad to see it. I'm glad that we're welding one school to another. Graduation celebration for our 5th graders, who are moving up to the intermediate school, from heartfelt poems to inspiring speeches, excuse me, a joyful and joyful singing, a well-deserved awards. It was a day full of pride, memories, and excitement, and I just want to tip my hat to everyone at BUES, because this was something that I had not been familiar with in the district, but I fully support it, recognizing these students' achievements, and then really welding us, welding those transitions, so that it's smooth as they move forward over to the intermediate school. The international competition took place, excuse me, this is at Barnstable Intermediate School. I'm going to hit to the high school in a second. This is our rising, no, excuse me, this is a reading activity at Barnstable Intermediate School. I skipped one. Step-Up Day took place at the high school, and it was well-received by the 8th graders as they were moving along. Exciting opportunity to meet new teachers, explore their school, and follow their schedules in the cafeteria, and also the classes that they were going to be involved in. So, Step-Up Day for our 8th graders, moving on to the high school. And what I did, and I'll just note this, I, I put something twice, but the, this is at the high school, the Future Problem Solvers. 11 incredible Barnstable High School, also Barnstable Intermediate School, students represented Team Massachusetts for the 2025 Future Problem Solver World Finals at Indiana University, competing with top students from across the United States, countries like Australia, Singapore, and Turkey. They showcased their skills and global friendships. We're proud of our Future Problem Solvers. Staying at the high school, this is the GSA Club that threw their annual Pride Party to celebrate love, equality, and community. This year bought, along with it, a bold new mural, which you'll see in a second, and a special appearance from the BIS GSA Club, a great end-of-the-year activity. Great job. This is the Civic Action Project, which took place on June 9. Students from 35 classes from 8 grades, 8 to 11, presented their civic action project. It's the 4th Annual Civic Action Project in the library, with an audience of their staff, peers, and community members, including Representative Kip Diggs and Senator Julian Seer. As a civics teacher myself, I'm glad to see this, and thrilled that our students are participating in this and doing a great job. This is our J R O T C program that, in my place, went to the Coast Guard Museum, establishing that connection. This could be an installation where these students will serve in the future. We're coming down the home stretch here, folks. This is our Junior Awards, again, something new that I wasn't aware of, but I'm glad to report on. From academic excellence to leadership and community spirit, these students continue to impress and inspire. Congratulations to all of the award recipients. This is Junior Awards, and this is the Senior Showcase, so something for both of our upper classmen groups, where our amazing senior singers wowed the crowd with powerful performances, heartfelt lyrics, and unforgettable moments. It was a night to celebrate their hard work, creativity, and love for music. The Senior Showcase. We're proud, excuse me, this is our final mentor protege meeting of the year. These are our first-year educators. Thrilled that it took place right outside here, and we're grateful relationships were built, growth was shared, and the dedication was shown by both mentors and our proteges moving on in their careers here at Barnstable High School. Coming down the home stretch, this is something that's new in the district and has been ramped up year after year, but our seniors now, apart of, along with their graduation practice and exercises, they go to all of the elementary schools in the district, reconnecting with their former teachers, and just making it all go full circle. So, this is something that we've had, and it's being beefed up, and I'm thrilled to see it. It's just a wonderful experience for the students, for the, you know, younger students, for the staff members, and it's absolutely tremendous, and I want the community to specifically note that all of those graduation gowns are not red. We had students from other districts, speaking of school choice, that wanted to return to Barnstable to participate in this activity, in terms of the great things that are going on right here in Barnstable Public Schools. So, I thought that spoke loudly, and you'll note, these are the students that may have gone different places, but they wanted to come home to Barnstable to be with their classmates for this outstanding exercise that we have put together. Wonderful. A few updates for the community in terms of our Summer Meals Program. This is through August 15, so please take advantage of this. This is something that the Superintendent will no doubt mention in our budget, in terms of universal meals here in the Commonwealth, and making sure that our students have the resources, specifically nutrition, that they need to be successful. So, anyone, this is through August 15, when school gets back to be in session. Summer Learning, make sure that we're staying connected to our academics, and new registration, folks. Again, you wouldn't think, it's not even August yet, but go ahead and make sure that we're doing this. In conclusion, thank you so much for the time. Our athletes have been tremendous. This was our football team that went to Maine, University of New England in Maine, and they won the team championship. So, this is a, a group photo of our football team that's, that's working very hard as we speak. And another championship to conclude for our football team, this is the 7-on-7 championship, which they also won, highlighted by an article in the Boston Herald. And so, our student athletes are working very hard through the, through the summer months, and they're going to be ready to go when school gets back in session in August. Thank you.
Item 2.4, Superintendent's Report, Sarah.
Great, thank you. A couple of things for the School Committee and the community this evening.
A couple of things for the school committee and the community this evening. Assistant Superintendent Harmon and I have recently returned from the Mass Association of School Superintendents Conference, which was held at Mashpee High School last week. It's always wonderful to network and see colleagues. There were several keynote sessions that we attended. The first one was with BD Wong, who is an actor, an award-winning actor. Timothy Shriver created the Dignity Index, and he spoke at the M A S S M A C conference last November. And then the third day culminated with a panel presentation, of which Leona Tate participated. She is one of the New Orleans Four, one of the six-year-olds who integrated the New Orleans Public Schools back in the 60s. And all of the keynotes were very impressive, similar themes, talking about humanity, empathy, and connecting with each other. I attended breakout sessions. I think Kristin is also going to share a little bit about the sessions that she attended. I attended one on school safety. We both attended something on artificial intelligence in education. And then I heard from a superintendent related to cellphone bans and the use of yonder pouches in one specific district. As always, we heard legal updates from the M A S S Legal Council, and we also heard from the National Association of School Superintendents as it relates to advocacy at the federal level. Absolutely, hands down, the highlight of the presentation for me was that Barnstable had a breakout session. We hosted a breakout session on day two, sharing our community mentor program and its outcomes with our colleagues across the state. So Jason Gordine, David Adams, Will Ford, and Doc joined me in representing Barnstable Public Schools. I will say that our presentation was very well-received, and attendees reported that they could see replicating within their own context, which was the goal. We've been encouraged to present at M A S C in the fall, and one attendee even commented, she's on the PD Committee for M A S S, that she had wished it had been the general session, and that all districts would have benefited from hearing about our community and school partnership. I want to share an update with the school committee and community about the status of our statements of interest that we submitted to the Mass School Building Authority. We heard last week from M S B A about our two accelerated repair program SOIs, one for the Barnstable High School roof and one for the intermediate school roof. We have not been awarded approval, but we passed their first paper screening, and they held a virtual call with us via Teams earlier today. Jason, Canetta, Tyler Arlington, Doug Ballanger, Chris Dolly, and I attended, where they went through their terms, conditions, and essential information as they do their due diligence through all of the SOI applications. We discussed various matters as it relates to funding and when certain funding commitments would need to be made. And the next step, again, we have not been approved, but we are going through their due diligence review process. They will be on-site in August, mid-August, doing a brief inspection of the roofs at both schools. To set expectations, we anticipate that notifications to accepted districts will go out at the end of October. And then from there, they will stage project commencement dates as early as November, but some districts may start in February or March, and expecting substantial project completion no later than the summer of 2029. So I just wanted to give you an update that that is, that is in the works and some of the work that's happening behind the scenes. And then to conclude my report, I have two kind of budget updates to share with you. As Andre noted, the state budget was passed earlier in the summer, and Chapter 70 did come in with a 150-per-pupil minimum aid increase that's substantially better than in years past, where we had seen something like $30 or $60 per pupil. But it is not to the magnitude that Barnstable had seen through the Student Opportunity Act. Chapter 70 is coming in $784,500 above FY '25, specific to Barnstable, and is just under $400,000 higher than the estimates on which we built our budget. This additional revenue goes into the municipal formula with other revenues this fall to be apportioned out according to the 60-40 agreement that we have with the town and goes into our reserve accounts. So for us in Barnstable, Chapter 70 is 3.1% higher over FY '25. While helpful, I'll note for the community that I've previously shared a 5% increase means that we are at level service. The state expected the local required contribution to go up 7.1%, and the local contribution is a larger piece of our revenue puzzle. The Department of Ed's appropriation language does provide funding for the department to study and make recommendations to improve the adequacy and equitability of the Chapter 70 formula to determine the municipality's target local contribution and required local contribution. What I have heard in some meetings I've attended is that this will probably happen after the current Student Opportunity Act implementation plays out, and then they'll take up a new study to look at adequacy and equitability of state funding. A big player in the state's budget has been the surplus that the state had as a result of the fair share revenue. And so that has played a key role in supporting education account increases. Overall, education accounts are seeing a 6% increase at the state level over FY '25. They've really shored up Circuit Breaker and filling a big gap for FY '25 entitlements. And they also created a $190 million reserve for Circuit Breaker during FY '26, which should give us reason to hope for full funding for FY '26 related to Circuit Breaker. There are some other one-time education projects that they continue to support as well at the state level. I also thought that I would take this time during the superintendent's report to provide some information to the committee and to the community related to federal grants, because there's been a lot in the news lately, and so I thought it would be helpful to interpret the current situation in Barnstable. So on June 30th, it was announced that some, but not all, federal entitlement grants were going to be withheld on July 1st and undergo review. Title I and IDEA were not affected. Title I relates to socioeconomic income, and we received Title I funds to be applied at High West, B U E S, and B C I S for supplemental instructional supports. And IDEA is a major grant that involves students with disabilities. So those were not affected. But the titles that were affected that impact Barnstable include Title II-A, which goes towards teacher development and professional development; Title III, which involves English language learners and immigrant students; and Title IV, which has some supplemental appropriation for student achievement, school health, and safety. Federal grants can be spent over 27 months. And although these monies are undergoing program review at the federal level, in Barnstable, we have carryover from FY '25, which is being applied this summer and into FY '26. So no immediate action has been needed. Many of our expenses can be covered now and into the next school year. Two areas that, that I would just point out as areas that we need to kind of address sooner rather than later will be our Grants Manager salary, which comes out of Title II. And then Title II also has a pretty significant chunk for mentor stipends. And so behind the scenes, we are making contingency plans in the event that the funding does not get allocated to the district. On Friday, they did announce that title, that monies for 21st Century and enrichment programs were going to be restored. So we're still awaiting some additional information, but we have 21st Century programming occurring in the summer and after school. Again, for us, if it were not to be restored, the impact would be more felt next summer rather than this summer. So our summer programs continue as we had been planning. So I think with some good planning, our carryover is carrying us through. And we do anticipate hearing more in the next couple of months. There is a tremendous amount of uncertainty. And I'll just note that the dollars here represent about 10% of our grant revenue, or $400,000. I have been communicating with A A S A and the Massachusetts School Superintendents Group, who are collecting information from districts, and then sharing that with legislators so that they understand what the local impacts are. And there is some pending litigation related to the matter. So a lot more to see. There is a lot of uncertainty, but I wanted to just share that our carryover funds are, at this point, being applied. And if we see something kind of in the short term, we're making some contingency plans.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Peter?
No, I'm off that. Thank you.
Andre?
Yes, I just had some questions about the Chapter 70 increase and how and when that can be allocated within the district. You said that it has to go into the revenue sharing formula, and then... But how and when do you anticipate those funds being available for our students and for the district writ large?
I might ask Chris to chime in on this, but basically, the revenues come in, including some additional town revenues, like unanticipated receipts, and free cash gets certified in the fall. And then that pile of money gets apportioned out 60-40. Is it sometime in the October timeframe to the savings accounts? Yeah, if you don't mind.
Please, if you can come to the mic, that would be helpful.
All right, thank you. So our tax rate gets set in the fall, and when that rate is set, it's based on all of the FY '26 revenue. We've got our updated Chapter 70 numbers, which equal $240,000 to the district if you're looking at just a straight split. While we received a higher-than-anticipated increase in Chapter 70, we also received higher assessments in some areas. So at the end of the day, the delta is about $70,000 in new money to the school. Since our budget's already been set, what we're going to see, and what Sarah mentioned, is that you're going to see that essentially come back to us as an increase in our savings account. So we'll see an extra approximately $70,000 once everything's done to set the tax rate coming back to the school district.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question relative to the federal funds. How will that play out if and when they are appropriate? I realize it's up in the air, and there's a legal battle, you know, relative to these already appropriated funds that have been approved and are being withheld. But how does that play itself out? If they are now afforded to the state, then how will those monies then make their way into Barnstable?
Might depend a little bit upon timing, but our carryover is going to carry us through for quite some time. I think we'll have an answer, and then the monies come in to, as they typically would, and we would, we would expend them.
Go ahead.
Chris, do you?
No, just because, you know, June 30th was when we generally received. And it's to be determined now. I was just wondering how that will affect what we're looking at in terms of what we have on hand. Because, again, in the best of all possible worlds, it would already be on hand. But, you know, it's going to be a delay, we don't know. But I was just wondering, when it does, if it does happen, how that would impact our financial forecast?
I think it's really uncertain. Some of our carryover will carry us through the entire school year. Some of this will not. And so there may be some decisions that need to be made in September, in the September timeframe. But we're looking to see if we can cover with, with local funds. We are being told not to worry about supplement versus supplant, that we can use local funds if we chose to, to support some of the, some of the items. A large, a large amount of what is affected. We do have carryover funds to carry us through the school year.
Thank you.
So just to ask a question a little differently than kind of what Andre did, but same kind of point. So right now, we're going to roughly get cut, well, as of, right now, on a drawing board, we're getting, we're losing $400,000 in grants, is what you said. And we're going to be getting an increase of $70,000 from the state government. By the time all washes out down to our pocketbook, we're going to get about 70 grand. So if it stays the way it is, we're going to have a net loss of, what's that, $330,000? So I would assume, as Andre asked, if, if those get brought back, then we won't have to cut those programs. If those, if this continues, and then we end up losing those $400,000, then we're going to have to cut whatever programs or cut that $330,000 out of our budget kind of on the fly, because as the supplemental money that we have from last year, carryover runs out, we're going to have to look at, we don't have money to continue running those programs, correct?
Some of the carryover will carry us through the year. We would, I think, at budget time, look ahead and see...
For like next summer?
What are we able to do next summer? How is the '26-'27 school year going to be?
Okay, so it's going to more affect us for the '26-'27 school year if we don't get that grant money back?
The Grants Manager salary and the Mentor stipends are the two areas that are most at risk right now.
That are going to run out maybe September, October?
But we're still waiting to find out. Mentors, we have longer to go, and it's variable. We're still doing hiring. We have started to prioritize, you know, at one point in time, everybody was getting a mentor if they were new to the district, but not everybody needs a mentor for their license. And so prioritizing who gets assigned a mentor is one contingency, one contingency plan that we could do. But we do have mentor funding through mid, mid-year, based on our typical, typical expenses there. And then the Grant Manager salary is tied directly to Title II, and so that is also at risk. But there's some contingency plan, and we might be able to shift it into Title I, for example.
Okay. So just, once again, kind of doing things on a flying kind of wait and see and how it plays out?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions. Item 2.5 Assistant Superintendent's Report, Kristin.
Thank you. So just to, as Sarah said, we had, we both participated in the M A S S conference last week. The theme for the conference was "Students R R Y: Leading Diversity, Belonging, Equity, and Inclusion Toward a Healthy and Successful School Community." In addition to the keynote speakers, there were over 40 sessions for participants to choose from each day. The sessions were held during two breakout times on Tuesday and Wednesday. So as you can imagine, given the number of choices and the range of topics, it did make it difficult to choose which sessions to attend. All were relevant and of great interest, but of course, choices have to be made. I was able to participate in two AI sessions, you know, because it really is, again, relevant, of great interest, and certainly something is looming large, looking at what AI looks like in the educational setting. Both were very helpful. Both provided a number of resources that were shared with participants so that we can, as we continue to navigate AI in our setting. I also participated in a session that was titled "Supporting Co-teachers at the Secondary, Co-teaching at the Secondary Level." The content was really helpful. It was presented by a district who had co-teaching models in place to support students with disabilities. But a question that came up was related to supporting MLs, and this actually created such a great opportunity to connect with, I think there were four or five districts. We kind of grouped together at the end, shared our contact information, and so now we have a small working group so that we can have some conversations and look at how we're supporting the co-teaching model for our multilingual learners, which is something that is, you know, in the works for the high school. And then the final session I attended was "Leading Strategically Achieving Ambitious Goals in Challenging Times," again, timely, pertinent, and very informative. We also did have the opportunity to hear from the new commissioner, Pedro Martinez. He was only two weeks into his new role, but it did give us an opportunity to hear from him and hear about him. And I would say overall, this was really time well-spent this summer. Summer update, as you know, things do not slow down in the summer. We have many educators who work through the summer, whether it's to participate in summer curriculum writing or to work with students who attend our summer programs. We have about 20 summer curriculum projects that are going on right now with teachers developing or revising unit plans for new courses that are being offered in 2025. We're supporting our new curriculum that we've adopted in our, for secondary math and K-12 health. We also have a team working on the early stages of our elementary math curriculum review process. I will definitely be providing you with, you all with regular updates over the course of the year. of the year to keep you up, keep you informed on where we are with that elementary math process. As for summer programming for students, we have a number of programs running this summer. Our 21st Century program is in place at Hyannis West. There are approximately 60 students that are participating in the program. It actually started at the end of June and is running for five weeks. Most of our K-3 schools will be running a Jump Start program. This program is for incoming kindergarteners, to introduce them to the routines of kindergarten, develop some familiarity with their school, introduce some early skills that will help them enter kindergarten with confidence. The program runs for two weeks. It's a Monday-through-Thursday program that will run August 4th to August 14th. It's a half-day program for those students. Hyannis West has actually been running this program for about 10 years, using Title I funds, and this year, we were able to expand this opportunity to all of our K-3 schools, using Title I funds for BCIS, our other Title I school, and Title IV funds for Centerville and West Villages. BWB actually opted not to offer the Jump Start program, as they've had a really successful summer enrichment program over the last few years, and wanted to use the available funding to continue their enrichment programs for another year. And so, BWB is offering specialized learning. It's for a group of six students. Nature Camp for 10 students, and Literacy Through the Arts. There are 24 students participating in that. And I will say, you know, just given our conversation around title grants, you know, this is funding that has, carryover funding, but that needs to be used, spent down by the end of September. So, it's one of those areas where we have the funding that's available, but needs to be spent down as well. And then we have our extended school year programming, which includes summer sessions that support our students with disabilities to maintain their skills over the summer break. This includes students who are in our NEF program, our ILC classrooms at the K-5 level, and our postgraduate programs, ages 18 to 22. And the ESI, ESY program, it also includes tutoring for students. We have approximately 48 students enrolled at the pre-K level, 76 students involved at the K-3, and another 76 students in grades four and above. So, things don't slow down in the summer. Our staff continues to work, and these are just the things that are up front and in our face, and we know that all of our staff are doing something related to school, whether they are really intentionally focused on it, or it just is on our minds throughout the summer. So, I do hope everyone is taking some time to take a break and enjoy the wonderful weather. Thanks.
Questions, comments? Peter?
Yeah, thanks, Kristin. And I heard a lot about the summer programs that are going on right now, and I'd love to hear sometime, maybe a program for the students who are higher achieving. I know, many years ago, I ran a summer Math and Science Academy that would sell out in, as soon as you put the application out there, there were so many families interested in doing that type of stuff. And, you know, the programs we run now, it seems like, I heard with students with disabilities and ESL programs, I'm sure they're wonderful, they're great, and I have no problem at all with them, but, you know, parents are always looking, especially for the high-achieving kids, parents are always looking during the summer to put their kids in a camp for a week, or something that would, you know, activate their minds, and I'd love to hear about that, maybe next summer, possibly, unless there's stuff out there that I'm not aware of.
And I will just add, you know, so these programs, while they don't specifically start, target accelerated students, there's certainly, that is a goal of the work. A lot of it is acceleration. 21st Century programming, for sure, is looking at developing students' creativity and the approach, some problem-based learning, and really connecting it to community as well. And while it's, you know, these are elementary grade-level programs, but I would also, within the BWB programming as well, you know, those are open for all students, and really to extend their learning. And I would say, for some, in terms of grant, some of the grant funding is, there are restrictions on it, so we do have to work within some guidelines for a few of the programs, but-
I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's not one that is specifically saying, "This is for accelerated students," if that's true.
Well, maybe that's, would be an idea for us to come up with. Maybe we don't, you know, go through a grant program. I'm just thinking, I was thinking back to, I don't know, maybe that program, I was involved in, went for about 10 years, and very successful, and as I said, you could have signed up 200 kids who were so much interested in it, and, you know, it was a good idea then, I think it would be a good idea now. That's all, just thinking.
Andre?
No.
Mike?
I'm off that. Thank you.
And thank you, Kristin. I have no questions. Item 3.1, Create Policy JICJA: Cellphones and Personal Electronic Devices. So, we moved 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 after 3.1. All right. So, we have Principal Canetta here tonight, in case people want to hear from him. This is a second read of the policy. He attended one of our subcommittee meetings. We made some minor revisions to the policy since the first read in March. I want to frame this a little bit. There's discussion at the state level that districts may be required to have a cellphone policy in place. It's, what we have heard is that it's suggesting a bell-to-bell full day with flexibility built in for exceptions for things such as medical needs. Our draft policy was shared district-wide, so that we could get feedback from as many people. The subcommittee met a second time, and what is posted in board docs is a result of that. We would like additional comments to come back. We have a meeting scheduled in August, so that there's a few weeks for people to take a look at it, for the word to get out, and anybody who's, would like to provide some feedback can send it via email to Peter, or to me, to the superintendent, to one of the principals, and we will take it back to the subcommittee. So, Principal Canetta, do you want to say a few words, or?
Sure. So- Now it is. Happy summer, everyone. So, we've met, we've met several times, we've met throughout the year. I think every school district is meeting about this. My wife and I, we were, over the weekend, we met a bunch of families that had students in schools all across the East Coast, and they're battling the same thing. Some schools are using yonder pouches, some schools are using a written policy that you just have to uphold in your classes. So, I think this is just a national issue. And again, I've said this 5,000 times, and I'll say it again, it's not just in schools. It's outside in the community, it's in the malls, you name it, everyone is living on this phone. So, I think, to go back a step, the most important thing that we did this year was we established how important instructional time is. Coming into the high school, what I heard was, cellphones were disrupting the educational process. So, each and every day, we remind students on the intercom that maximize all 60 minutes, and a great way to do this is to put the cellphones away. And we do have policy, and the staff do their best to uphold that policy, but going to other schools is, you know, Peter went with us to Brockton, we see schools that are using a yonder pouch, and there's some things that come with the yonder pouch that we can do to a certain level, but, you know, I don't think, I'm not sure if the yonder pouch is the end-all, be-all. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I think if it was a simple fix, every single school in the Commonwealth would have yonder pouches, but it's not that easy. And now, we're a year into this, and the conversations are still coming, and the feedback is tremendous, and again, I echo what you say, so anyone watching, please send your feedback. We need to see it from all avenues. We need to hear it from the parents, from the students, and I think that is going to give us the feedback that we need to make a policy that is going to ensure what we're hoping for, but really, in the end, it's about maximizing the instruction and not having anything disrupt those 60 minutes. I will say, in one of our conversations, we were talking about yonder pouches, and there were some situations where we understand that a yonder pouch may not be in the best interest of certain individuals. For example, you talk about students that may have medical concerns and situations that they do need to use some type of device. So, you know, whatever we do, it's going to take some planning, and I think the rollout and the implementation is extremely important. That's where we want to inform the community of what our hopes are, what we're hoping to implement, but the reason for this. And again, it's all about instruction at the school level. I will also say, you know, talking with some students that live far away, I spoke with some families from Jersey, I spoke with some families from Georgia, and their students go to school and use a yonder pouch, and for the most part, the students, it's just, it's the part of the day. You know, it's something that, at first, may have been difficult for some, but you adapt, and it becomes routine, and that's what we're hoping to instill in our students, is routine. What you do when you walk into the building, the importance of going to class, not disrupting the class, and what you do as you exit. So, if there is a policy that includes pouches, that will be something that we implement at our school. If it's a policy that it's a bell-to-bell, and we are enforcing it as the adults, that's a policy that we will have at the school. Whatever the policy is, the school, the administration, the staff, I think we're ready to implement to the best of our ability. We're just trying to figure out, how can we maximize this to maximize the time on learning? The last thing I'll say, and after a year into this, we can kind of reflect back, when you talk to schools, if you talk to Brockton, if you talk to Martha's Vineyard, you talk to any school on the East Coast, I don't know a school that's going to go backwards after a year of yonder pouches, and maybe there are some schools that, after a year, they said, "You know what, we're all set." I don't know of a school yet. There may be some schools that tried to do it, and it was a one-and-done, but I feel confident saying that, a lot of schools that are implementing these yonder pouches, I think they're going to continue this. I would hope that they're continuing something because it's working. You never know. I mean, maybe there's a three-year agreement, five-year agreement, I have no idea. I've also learned that there's other companies other than yonder. There was a school, these kids went to, in Tennessee, they used a pouch, but it wasn't a yonder pouch. So, there's just so much to explore with this, because it really affects all of us, from the moment we wake up to the moment that we go to bed. I mean, I saw it about a half hour ago, I saw a child trying to get the attention of their parent. The parent's holding on a second, on the phone. Like, this is just ongoing, and it's from start to finish. So, I think, we have to dial it back again, and at the school level, what do we want? And when we can finally identify what it is that we really need to tackle, what are the policies, or what are the devices, or whatever it is that's going to maximize what we can do to ensure that our students get 60 minutes of uninterrupted time in their classrooms.
Sarah, did you want to speak about some of the data that you found or talked about with respect to the increase in student achievement that you shared with me?
Sure. So, I mentioned at the policy subcommittee that I was, you know, really struck by some of the data that the superintendent, I think she's in, it's in Central Mass, I'm sorry, I'm not remembering the name. Whitensville? Yes, yes. Yep, Whitensville. She was talking about their experience with yonder pouches. They're two years into it, and what really struck me is, they had measured academic failures by grade and by cohort of students over those two years, and seeing a dramatic decrease in course failures with the implementation of the yonder pouches. And so, I appreciated, you know, not only, you know, some of the conversation as it relates to student mental health and distraction, but then having sort of that tangible, that tangible piece. Her take was, to move towards yonder pouches, they went towards yonder pouches when the state had put a grant forward. We did receive money from that same grant, and kind of beefed up the caddy system here at the high school, and put more caddies in classrooms for teachers to use, but they went with yonder pouches, and with the idea that everybody would have their phones away, and it would reduce the potential for confrontation from class to class. There are other methods that people use in terms of, you know, sort of securing devices through advisory, but the yonder pouches allow the students to keep kind of possession of their, you know, expensive device on them, but it keeps it locked away from being used. But I did, I was struck by the decrease in course failures at the high school that they were keeping track of.
So, we, even though this is the second read of the policy, we want to let it sit a while to allow more feedback, so our hope is that it will be finalized and ready for approval at the August meeting. And again, people need to make sure that they provide some feedback and get that to us. Any questions or comments, Peter?
No, I'll just comment or two, kind of back up Jason here. I like your phrase, maximizing instruction, and cellphones are simply the most distracting devices ever created. I mean, if you think about it, as soon as you hear it beeps, off we go. And we're dealing with these in schools, and we know cellphones have a lot other negative effects, shorter attention spans, increased anxiety, negative peer interactions, increase in cyberbullying, harassment, hate incidents. To me, there's no place for them in school, but I also understand how difficult it is dealing with cellphones if you don't have, say, a yonder pouch. I realize that this is a problem for teachers, and, you know, teachers have to deal with these constant distractions, and then trying to take away a cellphone, you think about it, this is, you know, a $1,000 device, or a $1,400 device, and a teacher or associate principal's taking it away, there's potential for a confrontation, for sure. I've seen the yonder pouches in action. They're fabulous. It literally solves the problem, there's no confrontation, they're done at the beginning of the day, the kids get them at the end of the day. It moves as smoothly as you could possibly imagine. There's a cost to it, probably, we're talking 1,600 kids at Barnstable, maybe upward of, you know, $75,000, something like that. But we approve lots of things as school committee members. We approve, you know, we approve in-services that might cost some money with the potential hope that this will benefit the kids, our new curriculums that are very expensive, and we approve these with the, with the hope that this may benefit the kids. Getting rid of cellphones will absolutely positively have benefit for 1,600 kids, and to me, it's an absolute no-brainer. Yonder pouches are the way to go.
Jason?
So, I want to say one more thing to that, because when we first started to talk about the behaviors in the classroom, it's always the negative, and you're thinking of the back-and-forth confrontation, right? Give me your phone. No, give me your phone. For the most part, I want to say, when there ever was a reminder, if a staff member had to let a student know, "Could you please put your phone away?", they would comply. That's still an interruption, though. So, if you have three students that quickly check the time, please put your phone away. Right up the bat, put your phone away. There's a few minutes. So, even a student complying immediately to a teacher's request, it's still an interruption, though. And we want our students, I mean, we want our teachers, they plan countless hours their lesson plans, and in the lesson plan, it doesn't show, "Two minutes, I'm going to take a break, because I have to remind a student to take a cellphone away. 10 minutes into my instruction, I'm going to take a quick break," because they have 60 minutes, and 60 minutes is very tight for what they have to cover. Every single interruption, they have to change and adapt on the fly. Three or four quickly reminders of cellphones, they have to adapt three or four times, versus a yonder pouch that may remove those quick subtle reminders, let alone the potential back-and-forth. So, I think we have to look at it as just a reminder, interruption in general, regardless of if a child's complying. Anytime a cellphone's out, the educational process stops, because the teacher then has to stop what they're doing and redirect their attention towards that interruption. So, I just wanted to say that.
Andre?
Yeah, Jason, thank you for the feedback, and then, you know, your experiences as a parent with people from different parts of the country, kind of getting a consensus of this issue. You mentioned the city of champions, Brockton, where you worked, and what they're doing with cellphones. I taught New Bedford, who's going with yonder pouches. You know, that's the direction the district is going, it's coming in this year, there's There's a number of meetings with the community to establish what this is going to look like. There's just a couple of things for me, as a teacher, on a day-to-day basis, just addressing cellphones. And I have to quote one of my heroes, that's Ken Burns, in his prohibition documentary. He said, "To pass a law in the real world means nothing. To enforce the law is everything." Pass the law means nothing, to enforce the law means everything. As a teacher in New Bedford, a blue collar, large community, the, the, the back and forth that I went through and that my colleagues went through relative to just generalized youthful behaviors and then cellphones on top of that, it's a second job description on top of teaching. You're doing, you know, dealing with the ups and downs of the youth and then throw in now this device that they have, that they're doing all sorts of things. It's not, my concern is certainly the distractedness, it's certainly the anxiety, it's certainly the self-esteem. Those things in, in the aggregate are very serious. But what you know as a principal, having to deal with discipline, is that there is, there are serious, inappropriate, and borderline illegal behaviors that are taking place vis at these cellphones and in relation to how students are interacting with each other, that we need to recognize, and those are the things that I'm further concerned about, right? So there is the distractibility, you know, there's the social-emotional piece of it. But District Attorney Rob Galliboy, in his cyber safety, with his cyber safety seminars that he's done in different schools, which have been in Barnstable, which I attended, which I highly recommend. As somebody who is in the classroom with students all day, I did not realize what they are experiencing in that cyberspace vis-à-vis bullying and inappropriate behavior. I was, and I'm with them all the time. So the bottom line, what I'm, where I'm at with this, Jason, back to you, and my appreciation for your common sense approach, is what can we do? What's feasible, and then to take maybe, to take baby steps? Are the kitty pouches maybe a first step to get to yonder pouches? Because I feel, you know, the, and I'm really, the, the yonder pouches, specifically in the larger districts, for educators, that's going to be a battle that first year that you're signed up for now. That's, and maybe teachers, other teachers want to speak about this, but I know specific to me in New Bedford, never mind just the beginning of the day, getting kids settled and having them recognize that they are actually in a school rather than with their friends. That's one effort that teachers go through. Now, the yonder pouch is a completely secondary effort, specifically in that first year to normalize that practice, that is, is the reality of the situation. You know, so just, if we say, you know, whatever the decision is, but just understand that if, when yonder pouches, I'm very interested, but my feeling is that year one is going to be a battle, district-wide, to, to be able so that it holds.
All we can say is what we saw in Brockton, that was year one. And that was September, was it, we went?
We did.
It could, it was, they said maybe four days of slow process after that, and maybe a week or two. You, you'll be able to tell us in September, I guess. Yeah, so it couldn't have gone smoother, they said.
I will say, a year into the high school, I am very thankful for my administrative team to say now that, you know, we're ready to go, and I hate to use the word battle, but, you know, whatever the battle is, we're up for the challenge. We know that's our job, and, you know, we don't come to work every day hoping that eighty to ninety percent of our day consists of cellphones, but if it happens to be just that, we do our job. You know, the, the work is our boss, and the work tells us what we need to do. And unfortunately, a lot of our work is revolving around cellphones, where it should be, instead of cellphones, talking about college and career readiness, you know, what is your vision? And we had interrupted with talking about a child, about what their vision is when they leave high school, and we have to continue to enforce cellphones. So it is an issue, but as you said, the execution of it is extremely important. You know, take being a teacher, you can have the most incredible lesson plan out in front of you, but it's all about your execution. So whatever the policy is, I feel confident, comfortable that our team will be able to execute it, but it will be a grind that first month because I don't think a lot of students are taking their cellphones out maliciously, I think they're doing it because of bad habit. So you are battling a bad habit that is instilled in students, kids, adults, twenty-four hours a day. But I will say that our administrative team at the high school is up for the challenge.
Thank you, that, that's helpful perspective. And that's what I'm looking, you know, that we're going to have to be on, everyone's going to have to be in line when we make the decision that we're making, so that there's that consistency, so that we can get the results that Peter was talking about. Because it is, it's a problem. For all the issues noted, interpersonal, social-emotional, and then just, you know, behaviorally, there's the issue. And, you know, once those battles, you know, are, or I, I don't, let me, let me tone down the red, you know, but once it's established, you know, and it is a hard lesson, that's the purview of education, you know, the fruits of having less distractedness, you know, and actually being able to have proper development as a young person, again, I note that, you know, as I kind of kick it over, you know, I didn't grow up, I grew up in, in the analog era, you know, so my, you know, I, partly analog and then partly digital. So, but even me, I am addicted to the cellphone. They, my issue is, they don't, they don't have any perception of the analog era. Calling somebody on a phone, walking to some, they don't understand it at all, ever. And so that is a whole new world that they will be entering into at fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. But if that's what it, I, I think we need to get them there, thank you.
Mike.
So thank you for coming. And I got to apologize, because on this beautiful Wednesday night in July, it's my fault that you're sitting here. Just, so it literally is a hundred percent my fault, but I apologize to you and your wife for sitting here with us on this beautiful Wednesday night.
I appreciate it, but these conversations, the feedback, it will make the year go that much smoother if we could all have the same.
I really, like I did, all joking aside, really thank you for coming, because it is me. I kind of, Kathy, in our agenda-setting meeting, had said that you would come to their policy thing, and I was like, okay, can he come to our meeting? Because like, I haven't talked to you since you were like, yeah, we're getting better. Like, like, it was kind of probably halfway through the year, and you were like, yeah, we're making great strides, we're kind of going forward, and then, like, next thing you know, the policy committee brought something up saying we're going to go to, like banning cellphones, and I was like, whoa, wait a minute, what happened here? I thought, the last time I'd heard from Jason, I mean, it's your building, it's not my building, it's your building, and, and I respect you more than you could ever imagine. Like, honestly, I'm not a huge fan of yonder pouches, I'm going to be completely honest with you. I'm looking at it more of a parent point of view, and all the questions and fears that I've had brought to me, and I, I mean, we all have kids here, you know what, how many times do you text your kids in a day? You know what I mean? So you're going to take that away from parents being able to do that. And to me, that's a huge, that's, I, I understand the disruption, and we can't have that, right? We can't have that, period. But there's another side to that coin, and, and something Andre brought up about, like, community meetings, like with parents, and like, maybe when you have, like, the, you know, when parents come in and meet their kids' teachers there at the beginning of the year, maybe something like that, you have everybody go to the pack who wants to hear about it, like, because to me, I mean, I had four kids go through Barnstable, and you know what, but it doesn't matter their age, I mean, my kids are in college, my kids are out of college, and I still text them. Like, we just do it, you know what I mean? So, and it's so funny, because as a parent, it's crazy, it's crazy the, what it has, the power it has over you. Because like, I'll be going grocery shopping, and I'm like, oh my God, I forgot my phone. What if one of the kids texts me and they're sick in the nurse's office when they were in school? Or, we all do it, I mean, we're all as guilty as each other, so, but my respect for you outweighs that. And if you said to me, Mike, we need this for, for my school and our school, then I'm going to be honest with you, I'm going to vote for it. You literally have that much power in my mind, and I respect everything you've done at the six, seven building at the high school. So I'm not a huge fan of them, and I think we really have to, the parents and the kids that are coming to me, I mean, I've had parents come to me and be like, well, Mike, what happens if all of a sudden they're not taking the bus and they're going to get their brother at school? Or what happens if there's a doctor's appointment? So I guess what I would like to, part of the whole implement, implementation to me is, I'm a parent, I have two kids in the building, suddenly they're going to pick up the younger sibling off the bus, how do I get a message to them? And I know that's, you, you don't have that answer, but that's part of the policies, but that's, I think, what parents' biggest fears are, is just the, the simple things that we all do as parents, you know what I mean? That's kind of...
Two things. One, that's why feedback is so crucial. So for those that are watching and receive the emails, we need your feedback. We need all the hypothetical situations, your thoughts, your concerns, because we see it as educators, we see it as the leaders in the building, but we also need to see it from other perspectives that are going to be hit with this.
Educators are also parents, most of them.
Of course. And my second thing was, you know, I come into this meeting with the principal hat on, but underneath the principal hat, I always have the dad hat on. I'm always dad, and I love being dad. So I can't have one policy and then go home and think of something completely different. I mean, I could, that's just not who I am as a dad. So I look at it from both perspectives. How can I support the students in this building, but I also let the community know, I want you all to understand that I try to treat your children like they're my own. So if I'm instilling a policy here in the school, I need to believe in it because chances are, I'm doing the same thing for my child, because when I take the principal hat off and I put the dad hat on, I'm thinking just like you, or you, or anyone that has children as well. So that's where I struggle as well, because I understand how important it is to be able to communicate with your child, but I also understand how important it is...
To not do it during class.
You got it.
I get it, I can believe...
How do we do this?
And that's, that's my quandary with this thing. And that's why I'm, I'm very, very torn about this. I agree with everything you've said, Peter said, like Sarah said, I get all of that. I understand that, that they're, that they're kind of evil to all of us, you know? What do you do when you wake up at two o'clock in the morning, you can't sleep? You go on your phone, right? We all do it, right? So I, I understand that, but there's also the human side of it, and like I said, just simple things. I mean, I used to text my kids during the day, they knew that not to get it in class and get it at lunch. They, they literally, they would, they, because they knew if I caught them, you know what, or if I got a phone call, their phone was gone. Like, that's just the way it was, you know? So they would, I knew I would send a text and they would get back to me whenever they could, you know what I mean? And not, everybody has that relationship, it's just our relationship, you know? But I just, I, I really struggle on this one. To me, it's not as black and white as, okay, you need sixty minutes, okay, for educational, yeah, but they're all humans, and they're all have moms and dads and families and everything else. So my biggest concern is when we get to that, it sounds like we're probably going to get to that point, to be honest with you. I'm okay with that, just please, everybody here and everybody involved in this, and I know you're not going to, but please, like, part of that is to have a, okay, you're going to call this number, and you can leave a message, and we're going to get to them with, the message to them within five minutes, or whatever. But, but I think that, to me, is one of the biggest problems, because I think you're going to be inundated with phone calls saying, tell Johnny that he's picking up his sister at three o'clock, like, that, and that's the way, that's what these gives, keeps us all connected in that way. And that's a good way, to me, that's not the bad side of it, that's a good side of it. It's just, when is that all happening, is the bad side of it, during class.
I, I know towns all throughout Massachusetts and the rest of the country use yonder pouches and figure this out.
And that's what I'm saying. Well, it's not reinvited, but like, it has to be addressed to our, to our, I mean, and I agree with that, but on the other hand, I'm not worried about Brockton, I'm elected here for the kids of, and the families here of Barnstable, so that's kind of what I'm concerned about. So I'm sure that it's been done, it's just a matter of making sure, like everybody else has done. If it's successful, that's the thing that successful people have thought about. Right. So I'm all set, thank you. Once again, I thank you for coming on a Wednesday, beautiful day.
All right, so I just, for those of you who have looked at the policy, you'll note that it's broad-based, and it's placing the procedures and placing the parameters at the elementary, intermediate, and high school level, at those buildings and at those levels. Because you obviously cannot have a very specific policy as a district policy that will meet the needs of those different levels. So the schools are going to come up with and publish extensions of this district policy in their handbooks. So anybody, I don't want anybody to misunderstand and think it's yonder pouches from preschool to high school. The reason the high schools here is that that seems to be the largest, it is the largest school and the most complex for handling this. We did talk in our subcommittee about the importance of having family forums and community input so that nobody's caught off guard, which again, is why we're not voting on this tonight. So it's not a done deal, we need that feedback, we have a meeting in place on August eleventh, and we'll discuss all the feedback. All right, so I'm going to move on, thank you, Jason, appreciate it. We've moved item 4.1 to this part of the agenda via a vote earlier, so we have approving the BIS field trip request to Washington DC in May 2026. We have Mr. Hurley here. This is not typically, if it's a repeat field trip, we put it in the consent agenda, but we are moving to a new vendor, so I have Mr. Hurley here to talk about that. I hit the button.
There we go. And to think I graduated from high school and they hadn't even invented the internet yet. You know, Jason, good luck. I know when I was in high school, we were all at the payphones, and that's how we were connecting with home, so.
Or note, paper notes.
Paper notes, yeah. So I'm here in the mornings at our ESY program every day. I love teaching with those students, it's kind of a refresher for me in the summer. I'm also doing curriculum planning this summer. I do know that our Gateway students are enjoying their time, or enjoying their time down at Mass Maritime, so that is one outlet we do have for them. So, Washington DC, here we go, year three, let's make this happen. I'm not going to lie, this is a huge investment of time, about three hundred hours, that's even before we go on the trip, plus the amount of meetings we do and the amount of fundraising we do. So I really try to get this going as early as possible, because again, I'd like to be able to start enrollment, and I'd like to be able to start fundraising, doing some car washes here in August, so that we can get some students on board. So DC trip, we're looking for May 28 to May 31, that is not going to interfere with Memorial Day next year, that will be a Tuesday, Thursday and Friday of the school week, and then we'll come back on the Saturday and Sunday. Hopefully, a trip, a ship from Mexico will not hit a Brooklyn Bridge as we're trying to cross it. That was a bit of a delay. Oh, I do have this, okay, fantastic. So boom, now look at that. All right, so Barnstable Elementary School, we're thankful and excited. So this is the new vendor we're looking at right now, Nation's Classroom, during April vacation last year. We've gone with Explorer for the past couple of years. I spent a lot of time, Alyssa and I, Alyssa Walsh and I both vetted about ten vendors last year during April vacation, and after checking references and everything else and following up, we really liked Nation's Classroom for the support they provided on the trip. I know David Anthony at one point in time mentioned the idea of having a chase car, well, we couldn't hire a chase car, but they hired a chase car for us, that they have a, they have our tour director on the bus, and they'll also have someone who's in the car going to our destinations before we're even getting there, making sure the tickets are set, making sure the hotels are set. So that's all happening. They were established in 2008, I just did a conference with them, a Zoom call with them the other day, and during the Zoom call, the owner of the company gets on the line just to see how we're doing. So it's a very personalized approach. They've assisted over a hundred thousand travelers so far, members of the Student Youth Travel Association, so that's the group that we're looking at right now. It's all-inclusive, the round trip. So before, we'd had students paying for their own, they, they were getting breakfast and dinner included, now they're going to actually have the lunch included, so when you see a bit higher cost, keep in mind that all their meals are now included. So all they really need to bring is if they want to bring, if they want to purchase mementos or things of this nature. All admissions and fees, evening activities, quality hotel accommodations, dedicated tour guides, bottled water provided daily, which is nice, because we've been providing that in the past, buying the cases and putting them on the buses. Nights carried in hotels, accident illness insurance. By the way, these wonderful pictures are from our groups this year. So the scheduled itinerary right now, we're changing up a little bit, but not too much. We're including the World War I monument, we haven't been there yet. We're also going to be able to, heading to the US Army Museum, looking at that, it was recommended to us, and it's got a lot of wonderful historical pieces there that, you know, it's not just about military, if you will, it's about, you know, our country. And so we're going, instead of going on ghost tours or bowling, bowling was an option, we are going to actually, we want to make sure we get it down to, get into the tidal basins this year, get to the Elma King, Martin Luther King Jr. memorial, get to the Jefferson memorial, there's a beautiful, and some, just ran out of time at certain points. Day four, day three is the really packed-up one here with the US Army Arlington National Cemetery, US Marine Corps Memorial, Pentagon Memorial, and then on Sunday... And then on Sunday, last, we're beginning to the National Zoo. We found that the National Zoo is a wonderful way to close out the trip. It's a nice relaxing thing, go look at the animals, enjoy those last moment with your friends before you get back on the bus. All right, so that's how we're gonna end it again this year. Uh, tour guide onsite coordinator, I've already talked about that. So we have our tour guides on the buses themselves. There's going to be a tour site or onsite coordinator in front of the buses in their own vehicle to orchestrate before we even arrive at places. Uh, they're gonna work with, you know, coordinate everything. Uh, that's, that's a huge relief, especially going into the hotels. Which bus is gonna get there first? Is my bus gonna get there first so I can pull out all the room assignments? Uh, night security, customer service, tour central, student travels. So, cutting to the core. Uh, right now, we're looking at the quad rate. Uh, four people in a room would be 11.99. That's again, why we wanna start the fundraising early. But keep in mind, that includes all of the meals. All right, that didn't include that before. One of the other things we're talking about this year is, you know, the travel insurance has become expensive. Right now, it's looking about 1.29, I believe it is. Uh, yeah, 1.29. So, we're looking, I know that during COVID, we got burnt on the England trip and a few other trips. And we've had these insurance policies in line to keep parents protected. I think it's time to go back to the waiver, give them the option. But they need to sign some kind of document, understanding. And obviously, Nation's Classroom has that documented. I'm sure Barnstable Public Schools wants to have their own document just to acknowledge that they are accepting the risk that if they choose not to pay the 129 on top of the 11.99, that there is that potential. There's, COVID happened, all right? Um, but you see, everything's included. There's a breakdown of what the pay is going, uh, the, the, the pay is gonna be. I wanna say that six payments is gonna be somewhere around 1.50. And then, uh, these are just quotes from our students and parents coming back from last year. "I loved going to see the 50 states memorial to World War II memorial. It was beautiful under the lights. I enjoyed the places we visited, especially Abraham Lincoln Memorial. It was so pretty at night. Going to the Holocaust Museum and Arlington National Cemetery was very moving. The National Zoo was super fun on the last day." And you should definitely keep going to Washington DC. These are actual quotes we got from the students when we, uh, asked for their feedback. And, I don't know if I can see it from here. "It was great for the kids to be able to be with friends in their rooms. The communication from those on the trip to the, back at home was great. And I enjoyed the TripCast," and that's our photo-taking sharing app, um, in that they were able to see what was going on, almost an as-you-go basis. You know, we, we take the picture, upload it to the TripCast and moved on. So this is our final poster. Um, Alyssa is in possession of this poster at the moment in time where all the students sign it. And then, you know, it's kind of a little keepsake that we have when we share with the students. We have our own shirts. This was the final day at the National Zoo. We're gonna try and take the picture for the group at a different place each year, depending upon where they're going. So, May 2026, we would love to go again with your permission.
I'd like to make a motion move to approve that BIS field trip request to Washington DC in May 2026 as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
No, thank you.
And thank you for the time, you and Alyssa. I know it's a boatload of work and a 24/7 at no extra stipend cost, so.
Yes, just when we get there, yep.
Appreciate it.
Uh, the nursing stipend, that's one thing I forgot to mention. So we are including a, that 11.99 includes a $30 per student nursing stipend um, that we will use to reimburse. I'm not sure what the final MOA was on that one, but hopefully that'll cover it. And then we'll talk later on with regards to the waiver as far as the insurance. Thank you very much, I appreciate you all, have a great evening.
You too. Item 4.2, approve BHS field trip request to Italy in February 2026, Ms. Gray.
Hello, everyone. Okay, there's a green light, that's helpful. Uh, thank you all so much for being here. Um, I brought Ms. McCloskey with me as moral support and to chip in her two cents as well since she has been on these trips in the past. Um, we came to you a while ago and were hoping to run this trip, um, last February, but unfortunately, we didn't have enough students sign up. So Ms. McCloskey and I sat down and we tried to figure out, like, what sort of was the problem there? And a lot of it seemed to be the cost, which we admit, it's an expensive trip. Um, so we made a few changes this time around. I'm sorry, I don't have a fancy PowerPoint, I'm sorry, everybody. You just have to look at me. Uh, sorry. Uh, and so we tried to make a few changes this time around to reduce the costs. So the trip is a little bit shorter than it's been in the past. Um, we'll be staying only in Rome with a day trip down to Pompeii. That means unfortunately, we won't get a chance to go to Florence. Um, and the last time around, we had stayed in the Naples area and spent a little bit more time there. Um, but if the goal is to actually get students to sign up and attend, then we decided that a few sacrifices had to be made. Um, so we've decided to go with that route, where we'll stay just in Rome. Um, so we'll fly in and out of Rome and they'll do a day trip down to Pompeii and back. Uh, we'll go to Pompeii, but we'll also go to the Naples Archaeological Museum this time around, which I think will be an exciting addition for, for us and for students. Um, I will be on the trip and at this point in time, unfortunately, Ms. McCloskey will not be able to come, oh, we're looking at, sorry, February 2026, um, February 12th to 19th in 2026. Uh, Mr. Cody Small, my department chair, who also conveniently speaks Italian, has agreed to be my, uh, my colleague on the trip. Um, so myself and Mr. Small are currently the teachers that intend to go. Um, will be once again using Hummingbird, which we've worked with in the past. Uh, they've proved very helpful, very flexible. They gave us a bunch of different itineraries as we were trying to figure out, you know, how can we try to make this happen? Um, and they've provided excellent service and support on all of our previous trips. And I, you know, we say this every time, but the idea of international travel, it aligns so closely with what the World Language Department attempts to do. You know, one of our primary objectives is to engage in, um, authentic cultural experiences. And while time machines are still out of the question, the best we're gonna get is going to look at, um, ruins. And, you know, it's not like we don't talk about the Colosseum and gladiator fighting. And you can show them pictures and, you know, highlights from, from documentaries, but there is nothing that is the equivalent of walking into that building and going, oh! And understanding how big it really is. It sat 80,000 people, you know? And until you walk in, you go, oh! And then you think about the fact that it's been standing there for 2,000 years and, you know, disrepair, but it's been there for a long, long time. And that experience is not something I can, we can give them in the classroom.
Not easily replicatable.
Not, not easily replicatable, she says. So the opportunity to take students overseas, to give them that moment of, oh! And to give them, um, an appropriate level of enrichment as well as challenge, you know? Um, it's a challenge for them to be away from their families, you know? Some of them, some of our students in the past, you know, they've traveled before, they're used to it. Some of them had never been on a plane before. And we have that every single time. We, we have a group of kids, some of whom are very comfortable and some of whom are like, I'm sorry, uh, what do I need for this trip? And so we think it's a really valuable experience for our students. Um, I don't know if you guys need further details. Do we, okay, great, fantastic.
We, we had time, plenty of time to review all the documentation.
Beautiful, thank you.
Did you want us to say anything?
Okay, good, apparently I said everything, good.
Move to approve the BHS field trip request to Italy in February 2026 as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second. Yeah, just a bit of discussion, um, that I, I just wanted to, and just thank you. Uh, as we thanked, uh, you know, because, um, you know, it's just wonderful and it's tremendous. Uh, and it really is, as a fellow educator, you know, you guys, you kinda, it's, it's a, it's a spark for your peers as well to see, you know, um, you know, what you're doing and what it means. I think back, uh, you know, I got a chance to go on the field trip to Canada when I was in eighth grade, not, you know, many moons now ago, as our 25th reunion is this summer, uh, at the, at the, um, it used to be called Barnstable Middle School. Uh, but Ms. O'Toole, like, those are the type of things, you know, we talk about, you know, you guys, uh, you do this out of the goodness of your heart, you do this on your own time. Uh, but what, you understand that, this, you know, I can still, Ms. O'Toole, what she did, you know, I, I go to apologize for some of my behaviors on those trips, you know, all those years ago. And you, in the scope of time, it, it, the richness, uh, it's like, uh, very, very strong. So, so thank you, uh, to all of, and then I just wanted to ask, uh, how many, how long has, have you been doing this field trip, uh, this?
Um, well, this'll be, ooh, I don't know. We went together in 2020 and then I led one in 2023. We came back right in time in 2020, it was close.
Right.
But we made, yeah, everybody remembers that.
I remember that as the chair of the school committee praying that you folks come back.
Yeah, right, well, trust me, we all were. And then we went again in 2023, but, um, I've led previous trips at my past school and I know Ms. McCloskey has also as well, and I know Mr. Small has some experience with international travel with students as well. So we've done, we've done this a few times.
So again, thank you. Uh, you know, I wanna get out there on a sunny day, but as much as we talk about the issues that we have, this is, what you guys are doing is the apex of public education. Um, and it just, uh, it's really great to see.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much and thank you for your time putting this all together and your volunteering during the trip.
We appreciate it.
All right, item 3.2, or 4.3. Uh, approve the DECA field trip to Washington DC, November 20 to 23. Sarah?
I'll jump in on this. Uh, Mr. Jansen is introducing a new trip for DECA, um, to complement the trips that they have in the winter, uh, which is kind of here locally, is a local field trip. They have something at the state level in March and then they have the nationals uh, that come about in June. Uh, so this is the DECA Power Trip in the fall, has not been done before. It does vary location from year to year. Uh, and, uh, they are looking to bring students to Arlington, Virginia, November 20th through 23rd. He could not be here this evening. Um, but some of the details are included for you in your school committee packet regarding their stay, uh, in Arlington at the Marriott. Uh, they intend to fly, uh, to Washington DC through Logan and, uh, they will have some activities during their time there.
Where are we, there we are. Move to approve the DECA field trip to Washington DC, November 20th through 23rd, 2025 as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Discussion? Uh, the motion has been made and seconded, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you to everybody who attended on behalf of those items. We're now on item 3.2, revised policy JJF, the Student Activity Accounts Management. There have been, um, I have received no feedback, Peter?
Uh, no.
Superintendent Hearn? So there's been no, uh, there were no changes since last month. Uh, this revises the distribution of the, uh, Student Activity Agency account to the unassigned revenue fund. That was the only change.
Uh, move to revise policy JJF, Student Activities Accounts Management as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Have an emo, discussion? Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.4, create policy IKB, the homework policy. This is a first read. Um, we followed the same procedure as the cell phone since it's a new policy. Um, the, we had the principal, Canetta, attend to one of the meetings, the, one of the elementary principals, Kim White, the director of teaching and learning, Carrie Andre, and the director of multilingual learners, Karina, last name?
De Silva.
De Silva, sorry. Um, and they provided input from their perspective. We had a load of discussion. The draft policy was distributed again district-wide, something that isn't typically done, but it was important that we gather as much faculty and staff input for feedback. Um, we revised the policy after that feedback. Some more feedback has come in and, uh, that's not reflected in what's posted tonight because I don't change things unilaterally, but, um, they were all great suggestions that I intend to bring to the subcommittee and would, um, expect them to be incorporated. Um, the policy is reiterating the commitment of the school committee uh, for student achievement to improve. And it establishes guidelines for ensuring our students are gradually learning how to embrace homework as a learning activity outside of the classroom. And the intent is, again, to provide the framework to help teachers determine what's appropriate for their respective courses or levels. And the goal is that students will be able to manage homework independently in high school and then beyond whatever they, um, choose to do post-secondary. What's really important to note, um, after listening to some of the feedback, is that homework comes in many forms. It's not intended that, oh, you have this rigorous homework every night making you sit there for hours and hours. It's, um, it could be a specific assignment. It could be studying or preparing for a quiz or a test, some other type of assessment, uh, working on a project, um, connecting your learning from the classroom in a specific way to your home or the community. Um, it could be drilling math facts in a, in a, um, more structured manner. So it's not, it's, um, I wanna make sure that people understand, families understand that homework doesn't have just one definition. So we have to make sure that our policy is communicating that well. Um, the discussion at the subcommittee also emphasized that, um, the school district provide appropriate supports to students who need support with this, um, homework activity and, or who may struggle. And so there was discussion about that. As always, you can send feedback to Peter, to me, to the superintendent, to the principals, or, you know, come, come and observe, but we need, we need the feedback prior to the meeting. Uh, Peter, do you wanna add anything that I may have omitted?
Uh, no, I, I think you summarized that very well.
Okay, so again, um, that will also be on our August subcommittee agenda. Uh, the policy's posted, Mike, you have a thought?
I just have a question. So I know you said that there's, you've gotten some more feedback and like, you're thinking it's gonna change it a little bit or change it? Do you think it's gonna be, I mean, is it still gonna? I'm not saying to you, but just kind of like, do you think it's gonna be substance changes? Or is it kind of like minor changes so that this first read will kind of continue to our second read in Aug, in August? Or do you think we're gonna do another first read in August, like?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, how much do you think it's gonna change it?
No, the suggestions, the suggestions that came in are minor, minor changes.
Okay, that's more than I'm asking.
Um, making sure wording is clear.
Okay.
Making sure people understand, just clarifying.
No, that's cool, I just, I just wanted.
There was a, there was a big change between the initial draft, which contained a section that was, um, sort of philosophy about homework that added to some confusion that, you know, that the extra language was the policy. So that, we took that all out. So you saw a big difference between the initial draft.
So we'll be able to implement this for the beginning of the year because?
We're expecting to.
Yeah, because there's not a lot of big changes.
Right.
So we kind of keep moving forward with it. Okay, cool.
And then something else that I thought of, um, after our subcommittee and now that it's posted, um, this is beginning in the early grades, you know? Elementary school. And so if we have, um, incremental, an incremental increase in the expectation of how much time homework will take, if we implement this policy at the intermediate level, well, these students haven't been incrementally exposed. So the teachers are going to have to decide how are they, the, the end goal would be So the teachers are going to have to decide how are they, the, the end goal would be to meet the guideline that is suggested in the policy so that the, the increase, they're ready for high school.
Yep.
But they're probably not going to be able to start day one in that intermediate school with the suggested amount of homework.
It may, because they may already be doing it.
And they may already be doing it, and some, and it's some, some places have homework and some places don't. And then again, um, language is built in there for flexibility based on student needs. Item four point five.
Uh, is, is there a discussion?
If you, yes.
Yes. Um, so I did, I, I did have a, a few things, uh, relative to this policy that I wanted to just, uh, to speak to, and then, uh, note, uh, that, you know, I personally just have received some feedback from community members, uh, but to echo my colleague's point, uh, I, I would like for there to be as much feedback a- as possible to the community and then individual school, uh, school committee members, uh, relative to this point, um, because, uh, how do I say? It, it, it cuts both ways when you're talking about homework. There is the side of the high achieving students, um, that, you know, feel that they are, there's an avalanche of homework, um, and then you get to the place of, you know, are they actually learning anything, or are you just cramming information to satisfy a standard for a test so you can move on and cram more information that you're not eventually going to retain? I simply want to note that when you bring up the point of homework in education circles, uh, there, there's two ways that it's looked at, you know? Is, is this just so much work for every student, particularly high achieving students, that, you know, they, they don't, you don't retain anything at, at the end of the day? That has been the argument for some educators in terms of why they say, "I give less or no homework at all," uh, because I've seen in the aggregate that it, it doesn't, it doesn't have the intended effect. I think where, uh, the spirit of this and why it's becoming a new policy, you know, uh, from the policy committee and from fellow school committee members and fellow educators, is to say, "We need to start somewhere." That, it, it shouldn't be the other end of the spectrum where students are not, ha- have never received homework. And you get into high school and you've never had homework before. Well, that's a problem as well. That's a, that's a huge problem if you're, you know, we have in eighth grade, but if you're in, starting ninth grade and you've never had homework in your life, well, that's the other end of the spectrum where, where you're, uh, not in position to be, uh, successful. So I respect both ways of looking at this. Uh, I personally grew up with homework. Uh, if anybody can tell, you know, I, I do, uh, like to talk and have, you know, uh, but I've always been bookish and loved school, and so the homework, taking, you know, it was already things that I was interested in, and so the two things went together. I love school, I love sports, and so I spent a lot of my time with school and sports. Uh, and I stayed out of trouble, and, and I had, I had a nice childhood, and I'm, I'm very thankful for that. Um, but to understand that, again, students are, are not being familiar, that, that, uh, I'm not pleased with that, and that, that doesn't sit well with me, that students, even in the elementary level, but specifically at the United School, and then going to the intermediate school, um, this has not been standardized, and so I'm in favor of us looking at it from, uh, a policy position. What I will say along with that, uh, as we're having this conversation, I'm interested, if we're going to make this a policy, how it directly ties to our achievement scores, our, our MCAS scores, and certain data relative to achievement, you know, uh, okay, so we have it as a practice, but, and I, I recognize you want to give the teachers the ability to, you know, to assign what they want to assign, particularly at the elementary level, so they just get used to it, that's fine. Uh, but if it is, if it is going to become a practice, I would maybe like, uh, to know about some structured conversations about what we're specifically giving the students to do and how that's going to help them to, to score better, you know, and to achieve more. And I, I think that kind of ties into my original point, whereas, okay, I give homework because the district tells me to give homework, and it's just busy work. It's just, you know, I'm giving a, a seventh grader addition or multiplication tables to do because you're telling me to do it. That's not helping them with anything. Right? Versus having it more, uh, the, the systemic nature of this to say, "No, we're going to, we are going to assign things and materials that we are confident, uh, are going to help both the student and the district, uh, with some of the achievement gaps, uh, that, that we have." Thanks.
So, Andre, I just want to remind you that, um, if, some of us are on all emails that come from the community, from the families or the staff, and if you're getting feedback from people, you need to share that with the subcommittee, otherwise the subcommittee isn't going to have the feedback, and we, if it wants to be incorporated in shaping the policy, somehow give it to Peter, give it to Sarah, um, it has to get to the subcommittee.
Well, thank, thank you for that, Kathy, because, uh, and I will certainly follow up on that, because that's, in, in passing and talking, you know, they're at, what's this cell phone policy, what's this homework policy? And they're giving me very important feedback, and I will convey that to you, so that goes into the decision-making policy. But the community is certainly aware, and I'm glad to hear that. Uh, and, and again, I, I want, you know, it's important that all this information is, uh, is registered, and just kind of understanding what we're trying to do here, because on the face of it, some people just felt like you, you're just assigning my student who's already very busy, more busy work, that's not going to really help them when they're already on the right track. We want to, you know, we want to debunk that perspective, and then for myself, uh, I, I would like, I'm, I'm in favor of it, um, but, you know, I, I wanted to, to, to connect with things that we are, uh, the issues that we have, specifically achievement gaps, um, and then our, some of our scores.
Okay, so Mike and then Peter.
No, Peter, you go, you had your finger on the button. I already talked once.
No, uh, I think I'm also ready.
Mike?
I thought you had your finger on a button. You were ready! Um, I, I understand MCAS, but I'm also a little further down the road than that. I took the twenty thousand or the further down the road. I also remember that we're also looking for career in college readiness, um, and I'm going to be honest with you, there isn't a lot of jobs out there. Um, I didn't go to college right after high school, I went to career first, um, and, um, my job didn't stop when I got off the clock. So I, I think this isn't, it's, and I agree with you, I don't believe in just busy work either, I, I don't believe in that, but I also look at this from a career in college ready. I could tell you that when you go to college, when, when I did eventually go to college, and I was not a good high school student, we'll say, um, one of the biggest things at college, going to college is times, time management. Um, so you have to learn, nobody cares if you have a twenty-page paper due in one class, they're not going to give you the twenty-page paper. No, you're going to have two twenty-page papers. So, um, and Cal- Kathy, you're a college professor, so you would know this more than any of us, but I believe, I, I, MCAS is important, and I understand that, and we've all had that conversation, but I'm also looking at getting kids ready for cor- college and career, um, which is homework, it, whether you go to college or career. Um, we all have, you're a teacher, you guys are all educators but me, you guys have a lot of homework after school gets out, um, or a lot of work to do after school gets out. So I, I, I get it, and, but I'm also looking at it as we're getting these kids ready for the next phase after high school, which is college and career. So that's all I have to say about it.
And then, you know, keeping in mind that we set the policy, but the policy has to have the latitude, the faculty are in charge of what happens in their classrooms, the principals, um, work with the faculty, and we don't need to stay in the nitty-gritty of it. We trust that the schools are doing what they need to do, um, in the best interest of the students. And so, Peter?
Yeah, the, I, I just want to say, anyone watches, like, what is this homework policy? It, it, it's really kind of basic, general, uh, you know, we're talking like, I'll just do a couple, first grade, ten minutes, at least one night per week. I mean, we're, we're not saying, we're not inundating anybody. In fact, it's reasonable at the high school as well, these are, these are just simply guidelines, just saying that this particular school committee believes that homework is a valuable, uh, extension to our instruction during the day, and these are some basic guidelines, and the teachers are in charge of doing this, simple as that. And I would hope all good teachers would, would not just do busy work and, um, would make homework a, a valuable thing.
Moving on, four point five, approve the deposit clerk job description. Sarah?
Yep, thank you. Um, so we're returning to you tonight, um, to put in place job descriptions and stipend in positions as it relates to the activity procedures that you approved in June. Uh, and so this is a new position, deposit clerk, to separate duties between the treasurer coordinator and the individual bringing, and the advisors, the individual bringing deposits to the bank. Um, the job description is modeled directly after the procedures, and it would be, we've talked with, um, the union and, um, have agreed that it would be an unaffiliated position, um, and we would seek your support of this job description.
And then, um, I would just ask if the funding is available?
Yeah, so basically, we would take, uh, the monies out of BIS and BHS in terms of their site-based monies that they have towards stipends to contribute to one person's stipend for this clerk position.
Move, uh, move, wait a minute, I had it, I just lost it. Move to approve the deposit clerk job description as presented in tonight's materials.
Yes.
Have an, uh, is there any discussion? Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four point six, approve lead community mentor job description.
Great, thank you. As part of the FY twenty-six budget process, we did, um, carve out some, um, out reallocation of funds, uh, so that we could kind of differentiate among, uh, community mentors. Um, this position would be a full-time community mentor position, taking kind of a lead role in working with doc and other community mentors, as well as the student mentors, uh, really looking to build the capacity, uh, across the district. Um, so this job description was modeled after the community mentor job description, but adds, uh, some additional, um, leadership responsibilities. Um, and the funding is in the budget. We reallocated, um, specifically the peer, uh, we specifically allocated some funds out of PD and also, uh, campus monitor.
Move to approve the lead community mentor job description as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four point seven, approve community mentor trainee job description.
Um, so this is, um, uh, an additional, um, job description, uh, to work with a, a young person who has graduated from high school, uh, but to serve as sort of a junior, if you think of like a junior counselor, uh, in kind of a junior role, uh, to be trained, um, as a community mentor, um, within, and to support the community mentors as kind of a helper. Anticipate that this might be an individual who is interested in being in education, um, and that we can kind of recruit and, and build a career ladder for.
Um, and it's in the budget?
The same way that the others were, um, in terms of PD monies and, uh, collapsing of the campus monitor to provide more funding for the program.
Move to approve the community mentor trainee job description as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Discussion.
I just have one question. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Andre.
No questions.
Oh, okay. Um, so, and I'm asking a question, I'm asking a question, it may already be in there, but, um, when you look at m- m- community mentors, and I, I'm, I mean, I'm well aware of how we got there and all of that stuff, do we have, my only concern is, and when it comes to trainee, I'm thinking somebody younger?
Mm-hmm.
And do we have, like, is there any type of rule, and I know age discrimination, so I realize that, but like, I'm just, I get concerned having somebody who graduated from Barnstable High School last year in being a mentor, and, I mean, on one hand, it's a good thing because they can connect, but on the other hand, are they, like, far enough out?
Um, I think a big piece of this person's role would be to work with younger children across the district.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it would be to traveling to elementary schools.
So it's somebody who's just got out of third grade?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
All right, any other discussion or questions? Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four point eight, approve student activities account coordinator slash treasurer job description.
Thank you. Um, so we currently have a student activities account coordinator and treasurer at the high school, uh, but this really codifies the job description in line with the procedures that you adopted in June, um, and later on tonight, I'll be asking for a second position, one that would be at BIS, um, because, uh, we currently don't have a position and a stipend there.
Move to approve the student activities account coordinator treasurer job description as presented in tonight's materials.
A second.
Discussion. Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, finance and facilities business, item five point one, approve deposit clerk position. Uh, superintendent, um, provided the budget information in item four point, uh, the item in, under the previous heading.
Move to approve the deposit clerk position.
Second.
Discussion. Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five point two, approve lead community mentor position.
Move to approve the lead community mentor position.
I'll second.
Um, discussion. Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five point three, approve community mentor trainee position.
Move to approve the community mentor trainee position.
I'll second.
Discussion. Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five point four, approve student activities account coordinator slash treasurer position.
Move to approve the student activities account coordinator treasurer position.
I'll second.
Discussion. Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five point five, approve accounts payable warrant, fiscal year twenty-six, warrant number four.
Move to approve accounts payable warrant FY twenty-six, warrant number four, in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and six cents.
I'll second.
Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain because I have not looked at it. The consent agenda, item six point one, six point two, six point three, and six point four. Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of the school committee meeting minutes of June four, twenty-twenty-five, approval of the special school committee meeting minutes of June eighteen, twenty-twenty-five, and July fourteen, twenty-twenty-five, and approval of the school committee workshop minutes of June sixteen, twenty-twenty-five.
Move to approve the items in the consent agenda as presented in tonight's.
It should be eighteen.
June eighteenth.
June eighteenth, can I make a motion that we amend the workshop minutes to June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five?
And is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we're voting on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Correcting the date, okay. Um, and now we're back to, um, the motion. Uh, we have a motion to approve the items in the consent agenda as amended and presented. Um, is there a second?
I'll second.
Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Move to adjourn the school committee meeting of July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Um, and this is a roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.